Tonight is Tuesday, February 25th, 2014. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, and liberty, justice, and
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. May I have a roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. I missed the public input. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the school committee this evening? Thank you, Erin. That's why I forget names. Good evening. Could you please just state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is Michael Dupuy. I'm here for the 2014 Southbridge Fest Committee, and I'm just here to formally invite the Southbridge High marching band to participate in the parade this year on May 31st.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Dupuy will relay that invitation to Mr. Garcia. Thank you very much. Apologize. Now we will call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. And could I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Olivo?
Present.
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Dr. Domingo?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Sixth present.
Under Chairwoman's announcements, I have a few items this evening. I'd like to announce that the parent-teacher conferences for West Street School and Charlton Street School, which had been postponed due to a snowstorm, have been rescheduled for Tuesday, March 4th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the schools. The schools will be sending home notifications to parents, and appointments may be part of that equation. So I just wanted to let everybody know, Parents for Children at West Street and Charlton Street. I'd also like to let everybody know that there is, on the district website, the main page, www.southbridge.k12.ma.us, there is a posting now about the Ad Hoc Facilities Naming Committee, so interested citizens are encouraged to visit the website and submit a letter of interest to the school committee. And the last thing that I had was that, this is the time of year when scholarships are available for students, and I just wanted those seniors to be aware of that, and their parents, that they can contact Guidance Office. There's also a partial listing of scholarships on the district, not the district webpage, but in the Southbridge Middle High School webpage, on the front page of their school tab. There's information about scholarships, so I just wanted to remind everybody to go ahead and apply for those. And that is all I have this evening. Okay. God, I screwed up again. I took an agenda item out of turn here, and we do need to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of February 11th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Donovan, seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion? Dr. Domingo?
Madam Chair, I would like the Agenda Item 6, Chairwoman's Reports, SubItem 5, amended with my calling point of order to discussing executive session material. It's probably the best thing, that we do that from the tape that may be available, because recollection of exact language is not clear.
Okay. I can do that. We can make sure that we add that is true, that Dr. Domingo had raised the point of order when I was discussing terms of the teacher contract, and we're going to get some clarification on that. Please. Do we want to hold off on these minutes, then?
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay. We have a motion by Dr. Domingo to table, the acceptance of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Congdon, seconded. Any discussion on the motion to table? Yes.
I would just recommend that we put a date to table to the next meeting, or give some type of final date of when we would approve them.
I think it's reasonable to do it as soon as they're amended properly, and if that is at the next meeting, then that's okay. I mean, there's no reason in delaying approval of the minutes as soon as the changes are made, so.
Okay.
If we think we can get them done by the next meeting, then by all means, but.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to table? And I have a vote on the motion to table, approval of the meeting minutes. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Ms. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Reports, Ms. Burrito is not here this evening, so there is no report tonight for the Student Advisory Committee, although I do want to say, I noted on the Southbridge Middle High School website today that they are having their winter carnival this week. There are events scheduled during the day in the schools, and from 5:00 to 8:00 every night, and again, a listing of those events is available on the school's website. We now have school committee reports, Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Curriculum Subcommittee met last evening, February 24th. Present were myself and Committee Member Jill Congdon, as well as School Committee Member Erin Quinney. Also present was Erin Osborne, our Supervisor of Instruction, Dom Nugent, one of our ELL teachers at the middle high school, and Mel Blake, who is the librarian at the Southbridge Middle High School. The first order of business that we completed was to approve our January 27th meeting minutes. All were in favor. The second item on the agenda was something that I report on frequently, and that is our English Language Learner Program, and we're still talking about that at great length, because obviously, the English Language Learners is still one of our major subgroups. So again, we're looking for ways to completely revamp our program, so that we can do a better job with getting our kids to become proficient in the language. One of the models that we'll be looking at is the European model. That's something Dr. Domingo has a lot of experience with, so we're looking forward to talking more about how that model could potentially work for us. We also want to talk about some other Plan B methods, so to speak, in the event that that model doesn't come to full fruition, and we want to have a backup plan. We met with Dom Nugent. She is, as I mentioned before, she's a middle school ELL teacher. However, she is the department head there as well, and she will be overseeing our ELL program, and on March 7th, she will be taking a tour of Gilmonteview High School. They have a successful ELO program there, and she will be meeting with their coordinator to try to determine what things they're doing correctly there, and perhaps bring some information back to us here for the next time that we meet as a subcommittee. A third item of the agenda was looking at our gifted and talented curriculum. That's something that we have in our grades 1 through 5. We call it the Accelerated Program, and it's kids that are placed in there who basically have the same core curriculum as everybody else, but at a faster level and a little more in-depth. So this is something that we will also be revisiting. We want to get some clarification on what the curriculum is, and to see if there's some changes that we can make to it to make it better. Our fourth item was the discussion of a library partnership with Eastford Road School and the Southbridge Middle High School. This was something that was brought to us by Mel Blake. Currently, our Eastford Road, we do not have a full-time librarian there because of the nature of the school, however, we have some four parent volunteers who come in on a regular basis to read to the kids and allow checkout of books. So Ms. Blake has seven high school students and one middle school student that helps her out at the middle high school as an internship program up there, and so we talked at great length about perhaps if there was any way we could use those kids as interns down at the Eastford Road School to kind of bridge that. There are some challenges with that relative to transportation and the rotating schedule at the middle high school, but this was just step one, to at least get the idea out there, and then we'll pursue avenues with the proper administration to move forward on that initiative. Our fifth agenda item, we talked about the Work Learning Plan and the Place-Based Learning Plan. I've mentioned both of those before. Again, the Work-Based Learning Plan is something that we're tossing around, where this would be for kids in the high school level, that perhaps, once they have met their core curriculum requirements and don't want to waste their time on fill-in classes, we could actually provide an internship to them, whether that be paid or unpaid, and whether it be within the schools or outside of the schools and in the community. It's something that has been successful. It's a program that has been developed by the Department of Education of Elementary and Secondary Education, and it's something that's never been done here, and like we've always said, we're trying to find new and creative and innovative ways to provide a better opportunity for the kids that are here, so this is just one more place for that. Our sixth item was to talk about the Optical Heritage Museum. That's a museum located at 12 Crane Street, and it's run by Mr. Whitney, Richard Whitney. He's a local historian in town, and the curator is Donna Silverberg. And Mr. Whitney had approached us to see if members of our Curriculum Subcommittee or any of our school committee members, as well as the superintendent, would like to tour that facility and tie in the historical part of Southbridge, and again, see if there's any way that we can tie that into our curriculum, as well as our Place-Based Learning Curriculum that we're, you know, working towards creating. We also talked about touring the Stonebridge Press Printing Facility. We met with Adam Minor, who is the editor of the Southbridge Evening News last Monday evening, and one of the things that came out of that meeting is the facility that prints all the newspapers, not just the Southbridge Evening News, but all the, I think there's 12 newspapers that Adam oversees. Their printing facility is located behind the Hotel and Conference Center, down behind where American Optical used to have some of its offices. So we want to take a look at that and see again if that's someplace that we could bring our kids to for tours, for kids that want to go into some type of advertising or anything relative to the creation of the newspaper, if we could somehow tie that into our curriculum and get our kids there to see what the real-life printing press is all about. That's something that we will be pursuing. And after that, we talked about our next meeting. It's Monday, March 17th, at 6:30 in Room M100, and our meeting adjourned at 7:41 PM. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Policy Subcommittee, Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Policy Subcommittee met on February 12th. Present were myself and Mrs. Donovan. We began to review more policies in Section B of the policy manual. Reviews were made to Policy BDA, Notification of School Committee Meeting, BEDC, the Definition of Quorum, and BEDD, Rules of Order, and we began to look at our current agenda format policy and discuss ways that we can improve upon that. Our next scheduled meeting will be the second Wednesday of March, and that will be at 6:30 in Room M100. Also, policies that we're going to be voting on tonight, we've discussed in the past and are also posted up across from the Director, Pupil and Personnel Services office. There's a bulletin board there, so all the policies that are either being reviewed, have been reviewed, or revised, are posted there. If you have any further questions, you can certainly contact me, or you can find those policies there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything to report for negotiations?
The Negotiations Subcommittee will be setting a date to meet with the Paraprofessional and Tutor Union in the very near future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Family and Community Engagement, Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We recently had a meeting last Monday, February 17th, with Adam Minor, the editor of the Southbridge Evening News. The meeting was held at 6:30 at the Southbridge Evening News. Adam discussed, as Mrs. Donovan had said, that he oversees 12 newspapers, and he also mentioned about Jim D. Nicola, and that the printing press is at the American Optical. We talked about having a column for children, similar to what they do in the Spencer Newspaper, called "The Right Stuff," where children in our school district can submit pictures, games, just to engage the students and involve the community of what is happening in the schools. Other newspapers have a column that runs once a week called "Ask the Superintendent," where different members of the community can ask the superintendent different questions. They also talked about having maybe somebody from the leadership team submit an article to the news of ongoing events in the Southbridge School. Adam also talked about having students submit photos anytime that there's an event at the school. People are welcome to submit photos, or a photojournalist with student submissions. So there were a lot of ideas and different collaborations that were discussed, so we'd love to implement these ideas. It was a good informative meeting, even maybe having a teacher each week from each school submit entire class submissions. It would be nice for the kids to be able to read what they're writing in the newspaper. But it was a good meeting, overall. Our next meeting, also at that meeting, we discussed a parent-teacher-student compact that the Subcommittee is working on. Right now, we're researching different parent-student teacher compacts, and at our next meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, March 3rd, at 6:30 in Room M100, we will have that on the agenda as well, to continue to formulate a parent-student teacher compact. Our guest speaker will be Jill Marie Flores of ASPIRA, who will be discussing the happenings of ASPIRA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Report of the SPED PAC liaison, Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The SPED PAC met on February 20th. They discussed trying to increase recruitment, getting more parents involved and wanting to run for positions on the board. Elizabeth Scanlon brought information on the MAS PAC as a resource that the school district was willing to help support the SPED PAC in their endeavors. Coming up, they are going to be having the first in a, what is supposed to be a workshop series, presented by Anita Pullan. She's going to discuss sensory integration processing and how to tell what's normal active behavior versus a sensory processing disorder. The last time she presented, it was very well attended, and I found it to be extremely informative, and I would encourage anyone that's interested at all to go to that or has questions about what sensory integration processing or dysfunction might look like. And that will be March 20th at 6 o'clock in Room M100. And the SPED PAC will be, we'll be seeing the Chair of the SPED PAC later on tonight for some exciting news. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This evening, we're pleased to have in attendance Ms. Tammy Benoit, President, the Fraternal Order of Eagles Women's Auxiliary. She's here to make a presentation. Good evening.
So I'm the Women's President from Southbridge Auxiliary Number 334, and we do a lot of charitable contributions, and I kind of asked a few people, you know, what we could give back to the town of Southbridge, and one of the things that came to us was the SPED PAC children in the town of Southbridge. So we wanted to donate and give them a $1,000 check to put towards anything they need for their schools, whether it's equipment, certain artistic balls, or anything, you guys could use it, to put towards the children in the town of Southbridge. And totally, we donated $1,250, I believe, to the SPED PAC Association. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming this evening. Buzz is going to come down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. [applause] Yes.
And then hopefully entice other groups to say, "Hey, great idea, it's not the SPED PAC."
Thank you so much.
The Southbridge SPED PAC would like to thank Ms. Benoit and the Women's Eagles for their generous help in raising this fund, as well as the $250 prior that they had raised for us. This money's going to be used, we're going to notify the therapists that we have this fund, and we're willing to purchase any small items that they need for the kids. Doesn't matter what school, what grade, goes to all our kids, and that's what that money is being earmarked for. So I'll be coming to you guys to say, "How do I get my money?" To help with these kids. But we would like to thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. I wish we could do more.
And, you know, that's what friends and families are for, to help out these kids, the community. It's awesome.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it so much.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Your support is greatly appreciated. Thank you so much. And thank you for coming in and coming to the meeting. There is no report of the Finance Director this evening. There will be a budget of the whole meeting, March 5th, coming up, so we'll get an update then. And now the report of the Superintendent, Mr. Nebberco?
Yes, Mr. Slowzak, would you please come to the podium? It's my pleasure this evening to introduce newest member of our administrative team, Mr. Walter Slowzak, and his title will be the Director of Operations and Student Affairs. He will assume the role of operations, and then due to his extensive educational experience, he'll also be responsible for student affairs, which will handle any student issues with behaviors, appeals, and placements. Mr. Slowzak comes to Southbridge bringing nearly two decades in a variety of positions in public education. He has worked in urban, rural, and small towns, so he's well-versed in a wide demographic area. He has held positions of Special Education Teacher, Violence Prevention Teacher for Springfield Academy for Excellence, which is an innovative K-12 alternative school. He also worked in alternative programs in Springfield, and coordinated Poet's Seat School in Greenfield, which I started, and also Director of Pupil Personal Services in Gilmonteview School System. His unique experience, Walter worked as a correctional officer while attending college, and one of the things that Walter said to us, which affected us a great deal, was while working in the Youthful Offenders Program and the Correction Center, he said the key to rehabilitation and keeping youthful offenders out of prison was education. So I think that's very important, to recognize that particular statement coming from him, having worked, and usually what happens, you work in that difficult population, you become inured to behaviors and so on, but he believes the key to rehabilitation is keeping youthful offenders and keep their education up. Walter holds a bachelor's degree from American International College, a master's degree from the University of Miami, and a law degree from prestigious University of Michigan. In addition to all of his career achievements, he also has served a host of public service. He's worked with Vanguard Incorporated as a legal advisor, their board, serving as a Human Rights Commissioner, and working with adults with special needs and developing independent living programs for them. He's been involved in the community affairs as a former member of the Palmer Zoning Board of Appeals, a volunteer firefighter, is an adjunct faculty member at the Western New England University School of Law, and also a licensed attorney in both Massachusetts and Florida. We're very pleased to have someone with this variety of skills, a generalist who can work with us in the Southbridge Public School. So, Mr. Slowzak, welcome, and I think the school committee with me wishes you a very successful and smooth transition to your myriad duties that you'll be taking.
Well, thank you, Mr. Nebberco. I'd just really like to thank Buzz for this opportunity, and I'd like to thank Pat Gardner as well for this opportunity, and I would just appreciate an opportunity to get to know every single one of you, and like I usually, I usually have an open-door policy, so if there's any issues, please don't hesitate to contact me. And also too, I'm also very eager to get into the public and actually take a look at the businesses at Southbridge, as well as taking a look at transportation costs. I think that's something, and also too, as we're, Superintendent Nebberco and Pat Gardner were taking a look at maybe some alternative programming as well in the district, to kind of have a catch-all for all the students here that have a particular, you know, at-risk students. So I'm very appreciative of this opportunity, and again, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
Questions, comments?
Do you have one?
I just was wondering, where is your office going to be? I know it's at 25 Colav, but where? Do you know where your home is yet?
I think it's in the old office of the Director of Operations.
Okay.
So I want to say there.
Okay. Very good. No way to find you. Thank you.
Yep. Still working on, I think I'm still working on the phone.
His extension is 410.
Is that it? Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you again.
I think, I just want to say that sometimes we short-sell the Southbridge Public Schools and say that we can't get highly qualified people wanting to come to work here. I think the last couple of hires we've had, starting with Ms. Gardner, Mr. Osborne, and Mr. Slowzak, changes that, and we've hired a number of new teachers in the last two or three months who've come with experience and the zeal to improve the school system. So it kind of bothered me when I first came and saying, when people said to me, "Oh, we can't get anybody good." Well, you haven't tried hard enough. You have to go out there and look. And when you can get someone who has experience like Walter, and also a licensed attorney in both Florida and Massachusetts, graduating from the University of Michigan, you've done well. Because for the public, University of Michigan is one of the top law schools in the country. And so, and then the benefit to the school system, besides his background, would be that he's a generalist, and I've given him a wide variety of responsibilities, because the first thing we want to do in the Southbridge Public Schools is ensure that the dollars that have been handed to us by the public is spent well and wisely for the benefit of the students first. We've had too many cases where dollars have gone into situations that did not serve the students well. And when you talk about the March 25th, that'll be our budget work evening, we're working very hard on organizing our budget and recognizing the financial situation of this country and this region and this particular town, we're trying to be very cognizant of the fact of how can we provide more services by redirecting existing resources, rather than constantly asking for more money. The only places where we ask for more money will be for new programs, for new programs that are necessary, and I've identified three. I think I ran by a couple of the school committees. As a tenet of the program is that alternative program for disruptive students, not special-ed students, that we'll be looking to set up. Secondly, we're looking at supporting the elementary schools with assistant principals. And thirdly, it's actually four things, is that we're, I'm very excited, I went to a superintendent's conference last week during the break, and heard and was involved in a number of presentations on one-to-one computing. I'm not the biggest technology guy in the world, but I think if we start looking at the needs of a 21st century student, clearly, technology has got to be right in the forefront. So what we're looking at our budget, and we hope we can get approval for it, we can get some money from the town, is to start on a small level, providing tablet computers for all of our 6th graders, and then training the teachers to be able to use those, so we can now build on that over time, 7th grade, 8th grade, and then hopefully, in 9th grade, you can do that clearly. And it also saves on our buying textbooks. Textbooks are very expensive, and it's all going to technology, so I think that we're very excited about implementing new and innovative programs for the benefits of the students. And everything we're talking about here is for better. And the fourth program is, we recognize we've been losing a large number of students to choice. What, you know, what do we offer? That's in a We want to be able to hire chorus people, to possibly put a show chorus out there. Those are the kinds of things that kids need. We have a strong music department now with Dr. Garcia, who's doing a great job. We added Mr. Kim in the elementary school, a professional musician. And my goal is to put him full-time and work from there and then add tutors or those positions that can work with kids, accomplished musicians who aren't necessarily certified teachers that can come in and provide that. So we're doing that and we've revamping the athletic program again. And so I think that we're in a position now to say to students that we can offer anything anybody else can in the region. So I think Mr. Slazak is, shows our commitment to getting the best possible staff we can get that can do a variety of things that are highly accomplished and have a great deal of credibility and respect in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on to Agenda Item Number 12. Did you have anything else? Are you all set? Are you all set? Okay. Agenda Item Number 12, School Committee Actions. 12A, a vote to approve a donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Fraternal Order of Eagles Women's Auxiliary to the Southbridge Special Education Pack. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Mrs. Congdon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Agenda Items B, C, D, E, F, and G, our third reading and adoptions of various policies, file BDA, School Committee Organizational Meetings, BDD, School Committee Superintendent Relationship, BDE, Subcommittees of the School Committee, BDF, Advisory Committees to the School Committee, BDG, School Attorney, and BE, School Committee Meetings. Dr. Domingo?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the policies listed in Items 12B, C, D, E, F, and G.
We have a motion to waive the readings of the policies?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Congdon. All in favor of waiving the readings?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. Now, we need a motion to adopt the policies as described therein. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Domingo makes a motion on the adoption of the policies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Congdon seconds it. Is there any discussion on the adoption of these aforementioned policies? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Quinney.
I have provided all the School Committee members with copies of the policies, because they weren't in our packets. So that was all. If you have any questions, they're right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Under Agenda Item 13, Unfinished Business, removing that Agenda Item from the Agenda. I was optimistic that we'd have the documents we needed regarding the contract with the Teachers Union, but that's not the case, so this item will be taken up on a future Agenda. Under New Business, I'd just like to inform the public, the next regular School Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 11th, 2014, in Council Chambers. And a Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting will be held on March 5th, 2014, in room M100 at 25 Col Ave.
What time? We don't have a time yet.
Oh, I don't see a time there.
I don't think we've been notified of a time.
I don't see a time.
We have to.
6 o'clock. 6:00 PM. Member Forum, is there any member who would like to make an announcement this evening or Mr. Olivo?
I would just like to first welcome Mr. Slazak and would also like to make mention of the parent-student lunch that was held at Eastford Road School on February 14th. And say thank you to Mr. Coyn and the staff there who've decorated the lunchroom very well. The parents seem to be having fun and the smile on the kids' face said it all, so just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Mrs. Congdon?
Just a couple of announcements. This Friday is the parent luncheon at Charlton Street and West Street School. It's also Book, Character, and Hero Day for the children to dress up, so all parents can, or other family members can go meet their children at Charlton Street and West Street for the parent luncheon. Also, on March 6th, at Eastford Road School is Feeling Big Literacy Night from 6:00 to 8:00. And the West Street School is also hosting their Pizzeria Uno Dining for Dough this Friday night at Pizzeria Uno, so take your ticket and go support West Street School. And I had some parents say that today, the 4th grade at West Street School went to the EcoTarium and I heard that the children really had a good time. And that was a donation, I believe, possibly by Dexter Russell Charitable Trust. I could be wrong, but that's what I had heard. So the 4th grade has had a really good time at the EcoTarium today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Domingo, do you have anything? Anything here?
Not good.
No? Okay, seeing none. There is no executive session this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Dr. Domingo makes the motion. Mrs. Congdon seconds it. All in favor? Show of hands, please. Thank you. Meeting adjourned 7:39.